Everybody up on the dais here? We got everybody? Yep. Okay. Mauricio.
Commissioner Goldman?
Here.
Commissioner Lama?
Here.
Commissioner Viscara?
Here.
Vice Mayor Sfetchen?
Here.
Mayor Shaw?
Here.
All members present.
Boy, new names. I'm not, I'm just kinda getting used to it now. So that's good. That's great. Well, welcome, everyone. Okay. We'll start with our Pledge of Allegiance. And Maggie, you want to lead us in the pledge tonight? It's okay. You can stand there. Just, you start it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Maggie. Okay. Our invocation tonight is Rabbi Haber.
Y'vino shalom, God almighty. Bless the members of our city council and guide their deliberations that they may govern with wisdom and justice, with grace and compassion. Avinu sheva shemaim, our Father who is in heaven, who created all in love. Teach us to love all that is good and beautiful in this world. Teach us to honor the dignity of difference, recognizing that one who is not in our image is nonetheless in your image. At this fateful moment in the human story, bless us that we may be a blessing for others. Guide the peoples of our community and the world. Honor you by honoring one another so that by reaching out in love, we may turn enemies to friends and become your family on earth as you are our parent in heaven. We thank God for giving each and every one of us the privilege of being citizens in this great land and residents of this wonderful community of Sunny Isles Beach. With the Jewish holiday of Purim approaching, the wicked forces of Haman wanted to annihilate the Jewish people. Through God's intervention, good deeds, righteousness, and prayer succeeded in spirituality, overpowering the forces of evil and destruction. Beloved God, bless the council of our beautiful city to govern with sincerity, sincerity thus bringing honor to your name and your blessings to humankind. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Okay. Has everybody had a chance to review the minutes from January 17th? Do I hear a motion approval?
Mayor, if we're gonna go for the approval...
Oh, you're right. It's an add-on. Okay. So I'll do the order of business first. Okay. See, for once, I'm following the agenda. I get in trouble. Can we roll the opening statement, please?
Ladies and gentlemen, welcome and thank you for being here tonight. Please turn off or mute any electronic devices to avoid interrupting these proceedings. In all issues that come before the City Commission, we ask that everyone show mutual respect for one another by listening quietly to each person speaking and that everyone refrain from any clapping, heckling, or verbal outbursts in favor or in opposition to a speaker. Individuals that do not adhere to Chapter 74, Rules of Procedure of the Code, particularly Section 74-21 decorum, shall be barred from further appearance before the commission. Individuals who want to speak on any item on the agenda are asked to fill out a public speaker's card and give it to the city clerk before the item is called. Speakers are asked to speak to the issues, make comments concise and to the point, and refrain from making duplicate comments. All speakers will be limited to three minutes. If you speak out of turn without permission from the chair and/or do not cease speaking after one warning, you will be escorted out of the chambers.
Excellent. We've got some changes to tonight's agenda. We've got Item 3A, which are revised summary minutes. We've got Item 5B, an add-on, a presentation by Florida State Representative Joe Geller. We've got Item 5C, an add-on, my state-of-the-city address. And we've got Item 12A, which is gonna be deferred, discussion regarding a consulting agreement. Do I hear a motion to accept the changes to the agenda?
Yes.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Mauricio. Okay. Now I can do our summary minutes. So I need a motion to accept the revised summary minutes of the City Commission meeting from January 17th, 2019.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good. Okay. Motion carries. Okay. So we go to Item 5A on our first order of business, a presentation regarding the pedestrian overpass bridge at Government Center.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, while Larry is sitting up there, I just want to give you the little background on this. The Commission authorized the design of the pedestrian bridge here at Government Center to the acquired easement connecting to the beach access easement across the street by the Trump International. In April of 2018, the Commission approved to go forward with this work on the design phase. And at that time, just for the record, we weren't formalized with our PAC committee, but we did, this was well into the works. We did send the conceptual design to them and we did get a very positive response from the chairman of that committee at that time. It was an informal review based on the circumstances.
Great.
And now we're at 30%. Before we go further than 30%, we want to make sure we're on the right path.
Well, Larry rarely disappoints, so let's have it.
And I'm rarely late, but I apologize tonight. I was caught by an expressway and the bridge. So, good evening. Larry Klein, Perkins &amp; Will, architects, 2800 Poncelion Boulevard, Suite 1300 Coral Gables. Thank you for the opportunity to present, as Chris said, the 30% design development of the pedestrian bridge at Government Center. We started the idea of the bridge looking for a concept as an idea that reflected the city of Sunny Isles Beach. We love the medjool date palms that line the streetscape of Collins Avenue and sought out of that, and that's part of this descriptive narrative that you'll see at the beginning of the booklet, an idea that these very strong geometric trunks of the medjool dates have this triangular patterning that became the genesis of the bridge design. So we are going to have a pedestrian bridge that starts in Government Center Plaza immediately north of the Council Chamber, crosses Collins Avenue as a clear span, and lands at the beach access point where there's a right-of-way where it can land. And just taking you through, if I could forward, you'll see here a concept narrative, the location plan, the idea of that concept, the development of the 30% design, the cost estimate for that 30% design, which is project cost, schedule, and then looking to the commission for a go-ahead to move to the next step. But you can see on the location plan, just generally, it's almost equidistant in the middle of the city of Sunny Isles Beach. And it will land immediately north of the Council Chamber, just immediately north of the grove of palms that exist there today with sufficient space to anticipate government expansion in the future. And that building was always intended to set back from the plaza to anticipate that. And it crosses at a slight angle. It crosses Collins Avenue east to west at a slight angle, so it lands in a very described right-of-way on the east side of Collins Avenue. And just an image of the medjool dates that line Collins. And we love that geometry of the trunks. And that really was the inspiration for the bridge. The bridge is a very sculptural tube. It is a steel tube frame that is repetitive and it is skinned in a very lightweight glass-reinforced concrete, which is a light color. It's white. It's a great durable material, great for the oceanfront marine environment. And as you go through the design, you'll see that we took this geometry of the date palm trunks. It is extruded. It's 200 feet long as it spans Collins Avenue from east to west. And there's a geometry here of how we started that design process to get to this idea of a very sculptural articulated bridge that allows light and transparency. The bridge is not air-conditioned, but it's covered for rain and sun protection. It has an elevator and stair tower at either end for ADA compliance and ease of access. The elevators have a glass panel for security. And there will be cameras lining the length of the bridge and the cabs of the elevators for security. Just some images of... This is not representative of the bridge geometry, but of the kind of material that we're talking about, which is a very fluid sculptural material that we think works well with the city of Sunny Isles Beach and the oceanfront environment. We do intend to light the bridge at night, so it could be color-changing light that could apply to events and holidays and seasonal activities. And the bridge really reflects that of Sunny Isles. And here is just an image of that very simple elevator tower at either end, the bridge as it spans. The inside of the bridge. And you get that sense of openness. We are compliant with DOT regulations for a mesh that will protect people from throwing things out of the bridge onto Collins Avenue below, but also making sure that it's secure inside and out, well-lit at night and very open and daylit during the day. And then the following image anticipates government expansion on the left side of that slide in the future. We have a conceptual cost estimate, which has a breakdown of roughly 4.2 million for the bridge, a design contingency and an escalation to the midpoint of construction, which we assume to be in 2020. And then traditional overhead and profit by the general contractor and conditions. And we're looking at a rough order of estimate at this 30% design of 6.6 million. And then briefly, next steps. We submitted to DOT in January that this 30%. We have a meeting the first week in March to review their comments. If the commission approves us to go forward, we would look to 60% March, 90% in May, and then go for permit in June of 2019.
Okay. Okay. Any questions for Larry?
I have a question.
Sure.
It's beautiful.
Thank you.
You said the mesh, is it gonna cover all the open spaces?
No. It would only cover up to a certain height to prevent people from throwing objects out. Beyond that, we'd like to keep it as open as possible.
Right. But have you considered birds nesting in the area?
There is a, there's an ultrasonic device that we are now using that prevents birds from roosting, much more effective than pigeon spikes. And it drives them away. So we think we should incorporate that.
Okay. Good.
Always an issue.
Good.
Hello. I have a question. The material, can you repeat what the material is gonna be?
It's called GFRC, Glass Reinforced Fiberglass Concrete. It's a lightweight concrete shell that's precast.
Okay.
And so we would have a steel frame that is the structure of the bridge.
Mm-hmm.
And then in sandwiched on either side of that steel is this glass reinforced concrete that is a durable, color-consistent material, doesn't require maintenance, and it's there for the duration.
Okay. And there's no, there's no issues with the heat, the material heating up? I would suppose it's like a material that keeps cool?
It will heat and contract, but we have expansion joints in the bridge that will accommodate that, but it's fairly stable.
No, no. I'm more concerned about, you know, the actual bridge being hot inside while you're walking.
No. On the outside, I think it would be warm to the touch. On the inside, it would be cool. And the natural, we're trying to keep the bridge as open as possible.
Sure.
So the breezes would cool it as much as possible.
Yeah. The design's beautiful.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
How tall is it on the inside?
So we're about 10 feet clear on the inside and the bridge is required to be 18 feet clear above Collins Avenue.
And the mesh would go, because I am concerned about people throwing things. How high would the mesh be?
We're still talking to DOT about that. I think it's gonna be at least eight feet high just to prevent people from trying to throw things over onto the street below. But not create a cage, that balance in between.
I think it's great design. Great.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Okay. Again, you know, I've been a big proponent of this simply because we got school kids coming, you know, the east side of Collins and it's a crossover. It'll take them right to the school. No more issues. And, you know, I go to pull off my island every day and somebody runs the red light when it turns red. So I know we got a crosswalk there, but I'm not, I'm not, I'm just not a big fan of, you know, of pedestrians crossing Collins Avenue. And I've been, you know, made that noted for quite some time now. So, but Larry, you know, you know, great design and I'm certainly in support of it. So with that, do we need a, do we need a motion to proceed? Or? Okay. So...
I'll move.
Okay. I hear a motion to proceed. Do I hear a second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Go to 60%, Larry. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Good night.
Excellent. Okay.
He's on his way.
He's on his way?
Yes.
Joe? Joe? No. I'm gonna give him, I'm gonna give him a hard time when he gets here because Joe's never on time. But, okay. So I will read my state-of-the-city before Joe comes here. So we're gonna go to Item 5C. So the city charter states that the mayor write a state-of-the-city address every year and then present it to the public. And so I usually write it in January and then we either read it in January or February and it gets published online. It's online. I think it's in Living Magazine. For some reason this year, I started writing and I got carried away because we, a lot happened last year. So I ended up, I think I had about a six-page state-of-the-city address. It didn't fit in any of the publications. Susan had to edit it, you know? So everybody had to chew it down a little bit. But the bottom line is, we had a lot going on last year. And so I, I've got a condensed version here, but the full text is online if anybody wants to go online and check it out. So here's my state-of-the-city for 2019. Citizens of Sunny Isles Beach, I'm pleased to present the 2019 state-of-the-city address. First, I'd like to convey how humbled I am by your faith and confidence in the office of the mayor, which was demonstrated by my reelection without opposition this past November. Thank you for that outcome and I promise to continue to do my best in moving our great city forward. However, nothing's accomplished individually and our city is only as strong as its people. Our residents make their voices heard. Your elected officials translate those voices into a vision and our city staff turns that vision into a reality. This year, I want to start my state-of-the-city address by focusing on some of our elected officials, past and present, and some of our key city staff members. Who's got their phone on? Okay. We got it. 2018 was a year of farewells. Police Chief Fred Moss retired in the summer and due to the chief's cultivation, the next generational leaders, Captain Dwight Snyder was promoted to chief. The transition was seamless for our police department. That turned 20 years old in 2018. Also retiring due to term limits was Commissioners Isaac Alien and Jeanette Gatto, who served to the end of 2018. We wish them well and look forward to their participation in our community as private citizens. Sadly, we said our final farewell to former Commissioner Jerry Goodman, who passed away on May 30th, 2018. Jerry remained an active and respected voice in our community right until the time of his passing. And I want to add, we lost Commissioner Roz Breslin this Monday. Roz was, was, she was 90 and she was involved in a car accident unfortunately, which caused complications and we lost her on Monday. And we all were devastated. I think Roz was a beacon of hope for us all into retirement, you know, based on her spirit, her, I mean, her optimism. There was nothing not to like about Roz. That's all I can say. And she's served in this commission for many years and I served with her. And we're gonna miss her dearly. So unfortunately, she passed on Monday. In December, where are we? Okay. We also welcomed in Commissioners Jennifer Viscara, who ran unopposed, and Alex Lama, who made history by winning one of the only two runoff elections in our 21 years. And Alex has the tire tracks across his back to prove that. In December 2018, Commissioner Larissa Sfetchen was appointed as vice mayor. We congratulate them all and look forward to the next four years of working together. Most recently, our city attorney, Hans Ottenot, announced that he was leaving for the private sector. After serving 13 years as our city attorney, we wish him well in his new endeavors. We've accomplished a great deal in 2018 and once again, this is due to the actions of our dedicated people. Our finances remain strong with our finance department winning another Financial Excellence Award. Our city's assessed taxable value increased by 1.84% from $10.9 billion to $11.1 billion, with $31.4 million coming from new construction being added to the tax rolls. I'm proud to report that our millage rate is the fourth lowest municipality in Miami-Dade County at 2.2 mills or $22 per thousand dollars of assessed value. The city continues to carry a hurricane emergency and disaster recovery operating reserve of $10 million and a fiscal stability reserve of 25% of the general funds operating expenditures, which for this year is budgeted at $8.9 million. These, along with our unassigned fund balance of $6.3 million, provide for more than $25 million in fund balance. We are always hoping we can avoid disasters. However, if one strikes, we are prepared financially. One of the most visible and difficult projects for our residents has been the utility undergrounding and streetlight enhancement project. After over a year of uneven road surfacing, the Florida Department of Transportation finally completed the Collins Avenue repaving project in 2018 and now the city has resumed the undergrounding project. All the underground conduit has been laid and the conversion for FPL lines from above ground has commenced at the south end of the city. This is the first step in getting all of our electrical and utility distribution lines off of the overhead poles. And simultaneously, the city is installing new decorative streetlights starting at the north end of the city. This is still a long process that'll require some inconveniences to the public, but all will benefit greatly once this work is completed. You can expect this project to continue through 2019 and 2020, but fortunately, we won't have the kind of lane closures we had before in finishing this project up. The emergency pedestrian bridge at North Bay Road opened in February 2018 with little fanfare but tremendous appreciation. After years of controversy over the construction of the bridge, upon opening, the neighborhoods on both sides were using the bridge to visit friends and family, travel to and from school in our parks, and also just to sit, relax, and enjoy the view. With this success in mind, we've identified three locations for pedestrian bridges across Collins Avenue. In 2018, we commenced on the design of a pedestrian bridge that would connect the east side with the west side of Collins Avenue at the Government Center. Obviously, Larry just made the presentation of that design. Walking or biking from the north or south, this location is situated to offer the best crossing to get to our most frequented city and county services. The conceptual design is complete and 2019 will see the finalized design after satisfying all of the federal, state, and local permitting agencies' requirements. Also in 2018, we launched a planning study for a bridge at the intersection of 174 Street and Collins Avenue to link the community on the west side and Sampson Ocean Park on the east side. This study is scheduled to be completed in 2019 and preliminary designs and permitting to follow. Our third pedestrian bridge will be integrated into a new project at the northwest corner of the intersection at westbound Sunny Isles Beach Boulevard and Collins Avenue. The number of pedestrians crossing combined with multi-lane turns and convergences make it a priority for enhancing pedestrian safety. Pedestrian safety has been and will continue to remain one of our highest priorities. In 2018, our police department commenced a new multifaceted enforcement initiative along our three major roadways, which have yielded very positive results. Additional pedestrian mobility improvements continue with the addition of a lighted crosswalk at 172nd Street and North Bay Road to be completed in 2019. One of the most important amenities of our city is our beach. Early in 2018, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers completed a beach sand renourishment project from our northern border to 184th Street and areas both north and south of the pier. This project, along with a private developer, let me see. This project, along with a private developer project completed in April 2018, brought in approximately 150,000 cubic yards of sand. Beach sand will continue to be on our project list for the next several years as the city is scheduled to receive more than 80,000 cubic yards of sand in 2019 from private development projects. In an effort to keep as much new sand in place as possible, the Army Corps of Engineers will assess the condition of submerged breakwaters in April 2019 as the city pursues the viability nineteen, as the city pursues the viability of a structure under the pier to maintain our sand. Our IT department was busy on the beach in two thousand and eighteen with the addition of free Wi-Fi coverage along the shoreline, an amenity few other cities provide. IT also provided security camera upgrades in our parks and free Wi-Fi coverage on our community shuttles, shuttle buses. Our building department received approval from the Florida Department of Environmental Protection to move forward with a plan to add some much-needed shade on the pier. The project will now move forward to the design and procurement phase. Our infrastructure improvements are ongoing. The engineering design of the Golden Shores undergrounding project will begin in two thousand and nineteen. The bid for the Golden Shores pump station renovation design will be awarded in two thousand and nineteen, with work expected to commence by the end of two thousand and nineteen. We're systematically going through the drainage system citywide and making improvements to better prepare it for ten, fifty, and even hundred-year storm flooding and flood events. These improvements include cleaning out and upgrading wells and pump stations, investigating storm drainage outfalls into the bay while making improvements as needed. The Central Island Drainage Project is well underway, with completion anticipated in early two thousand and nineteen. A more innovative piece of an often misunderstood subject is our stormwater facility retention capacity study that will analyze all of the stormwater retention in the city to assess capacity, adding wells, making existing wells deeper, and implementing more innovative techniques as a result of the study. I often call that the plumbing, you know, literally and figuratively, so. A few years ago, we embarked on the completion of a Community Cultural Master Plan, or CMP. Many of the goals of the CMP are being met, and it continues to guide our decisions as to the events and initiatives that best meet the needs and interests of our residents. The events component included the addition of the annual fireworks show from the pier at the city's anniversary celebration, seasonal fishing tournaments, the Gateway Live Performance Series, as well as the bridge building that was accomplished through the SIB Sand Angels Event. With the two thousand and eighteen establishment of the Public Arts Advisory Committee, or PAC, the city has tasked them with long-term projects related to creative placemaking and community bridge building. In two thousand and nineteen, we can expect them to work toward the city's first art park in Town Center Park. Recognizing the need for multi-generational programming, the Culture and Community Service Department added programs for all ages, such as Tai Chi for seniors, an adult basketball league, a youth recreation volleyball league, and fitness programs, just to name a few. The city is also engaging more teens with monthly teen-only events in our parks. The community center at Gateway Park completed its approval and design phase processes in two thousand and eighteen. Build-out work will occur in two thousand and nineteen and is expected to conclude by year-end. It will be a quality, multifunctional facility unlike any other space the city owns with programming and entertaining spaces. It will be a special place and provide a central hub for our seniors for activities and socializing, and I feel terrible that Roz isn't here to see it because Roz was a champion of this. As a continuation of our cultural exchanges between our sister cities, our second international intern as part of our sister-city internship program joined us in two thousand and eighteen. Where's Carol? Raise your hand, Carol. Is she here? Okay. Carol Malamed from Punta del Este, Uruguay, with education and experience in tourism and marketing, taught us a great deal in two thousand and eighteen, and she will continue to learn our city government in two thousand and nineteen as she finishes out her term. Our media team has been working hard to connect our community through all media formats this year. In August two thousand and eighteen, they launched the SIB Alert Emergency Notification System, which communicates critical and time-sensitive information to all registered users. They upgraded the audiovisual system to provide closed captioning to the city commission meetings and workshops. We continue to achieve new levels of reporting, accessibility, and transparency, which is directly attributed to the work of our, great work of our media team. Homestretch. Citywide development is the economic engine that continues to provide many of the resources for creating and maintaining our quality of life. In two thousand and eighteen, three projects were completed: Publix Market, and Jade Signature, and Muse Open Front, Oceanfront condominium buildings. Both Park Towers and Ritz-Carlton are slated for completion in two thousand and nineteen, and projects under construction throughout two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty are the Turnberry Ocean Club, the Aurora, the Saint-Tropez Office Building, the Armani Casa, and the Estates at Aquilina. Short-term vacation rentals have been a difficult issue for many buildings to manage, oftentimes eroding the quality of life in certain buildings and creating unfair competition with our hotels. After several months of studying this complex issue and receiving many complaints from our residents, in May two thousand and eighteen, the city commission adopted a sweeping ordinance to regulate short-term rentals. Our preliminary research discovered more than two thousand unlicensed rental units out of the roughly eighteen thousand total condominium units within our city. Registration with the city opened in October, and enforcement commenced in December. To date, approximately six hundred applications have been received. Early results have provided us with some solid indications that our approach to regulating this is working. Safety in our schools became a national headline in two thousand and eighteen. We were reminded that we must stay vigilant in our training and proactive outreach. We continue to train our professionals on all levels of safety concerns, and all city projects are evaluated from the strictest safety standpoint at the design phase for the safety of our employees and patrons. There has been a deep working relationship between our police department and our K-8 Community School since the day it was opened. This special relationship is evidenced every day by the number of our men and women in uniform assisting at the school. In addition to maintaining with the finest police forces in Florida, our city's continued relationship with the Miami-Dade County Fire Rescue continues to strengthen. They have increased their community outreach to improve safety and detection systems for all condo dwellers, whom are encouraged to take advantage of their offers. We thank all our first responders for their continued dedication and service to our community. This State of the City address stated, started with a few words about the people who live, work, and serve within our great community. The multitude of activities and accomplishments described above are all possible because of the individuals involved in bringing excellence every day to the tasks at hand. I want to thank my colleagues on our city commission, past and present, and once again welcome our new members to the commission and wish them success. I also want to thank each and every member of our city staff who work tirelessly to turn our collective visions into reality. In the end, our community is made up and supported by our residents and guests, many of whom come from throughout our nation and the world, bringing us a culturally rich environment to our city that makes us all better people. We are thankful for the opportunity to live in such an extraordinary place. Thank you, and may God bless you. Thank you. Okay. So that's the, that's the condensed version. How's that? So Joe, see, when I, when I have to read the State of the City, you're in good shape tonight, so come on up. So, this is our Florida State Representative, Joe Geller, for, for our region, and Joe's going to tell us a little bit about what's going on in Tallahassee these days. Joe, welcome. It's good to see you again.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Nice to see you, Vice Mayor, commissioners, men and attorneys, Mr. Manager, staff, and to everybody else here tonight that gets the opportunity. I'm very pleased to be in front of you tonight. We worked hard to get here tonight. The schedule from Tallahassee is a little difficult sometimes with planes, so I ended up driving to Jacksonville and taking a flight from there to be able to make it here.
I-ten.
Yes. Always a challenge. But, again, I'm very pleased to be here and I'm very pleased to be able to catch, I think, ninety percent of the State of the City, Mr. Mayor, so thank you very much. Let me just start by saying that, of course, we're fighting hard for the appropriation that you've requested. It is for the Sunny, excuse me, Golden Isles Stormwater Pump Station, and I know that's something that the city needs and has fought for, and we're, you know, we're optimistic. There is a new chair of the committee that deals with water and stormwater projects, and it's a member who is from South Florida. The last chair that dealt with that was somebody from the very center of the state, Wa Chula, which is not to be confused with Wa Cola, but now the state rep, represents the Florida Keys, Holly Rashein, is the chair of that subcommittee. So, we think we'll get it through the subcommittee, we think we'll get it to the full committee. Sometimes, though, of course, what happens is in the final negotiations with the Senate, things don't always go as we would like, but we're going to push very hard to get this. The city deserves it and needs it, and, incidentally, I understand that there's also some conversation between your city and your neighbor to the north about working together and having an emergency operations center that will be hardened and that will be available to use by this city as well as them and Hallendale, and that passed through subcommittee just this morning. It's the last thing I did before I jumped in the car. So we're hopeful that that, those will work. On the longer view, let me say that this is a very significant session. We have a new governor. We have a new speaker. We have only the third speaker in the history of Florida from Dade County, and that's our friend Jose Aliva from just a little bit west of here. And only Marco Rubio and before him Dick Pettigrew, back when I was just starting out, have been speakers from Dade County. So I'm hopeful that we're going to do very well, because we do have somebody who knows the problems of our community and knows the problems of Dade County. I spoke, for instance, yesterday with our state's attorney Kathy Fernandez-Rundle about the problems they're having keeping good attorneys in that office as well, frankly, as the public defender's office, and they're just, the pay scale doesn't reflect it, and it's so expensive to live down here compared to a lot of other places where we have state's attorneys making the same pay scale. So, I think we'll do well with the new speaker, and let me say, as someone who was not an enormous fan of the prior governor, that we have heard a lot of good things from the new governor. I haven't liked everything I've heard, but relatively speaking, it's a breath of fresh air. It's the first time we've had a new governor, obviously, in eight years, and he's had a lot of good things to say, so, you know, to some degree, the devil's always in the details, but so far, so good, so we're hopeful that this is going to be a productive session and a lot of things will get done. I noted particularly the comments that you made, Mayor, about the vacation rental issue. There are always some people in Tallahassee who think that it's their job to tell every city what to do, and I happen not to be a subscriber to that. There are some things that need to be state-regulated, that need to have uniformity. A good example of those would be the ride-sharing issue of Uber and Lyft. You can't be driving up US One or A One A and have a different law applied to you every time you cross into a new jurisdiction. That's got to be mandated. But this vacation rental issue is a particular one that I think is not very well-suited for preemption, because different communities have different issues and different standards. You talked about, you know, the issue with some very exclusive hotels here, and yet, because you have so many condominium units, it's just not the right approach to try to tell Sunny Isles Beach or Miami Beach how they're going to regulate it and think that that's going to be the same kind of regulation that you need in Medley or in Virginia Gardens. The situations are different, the problems are different, and unfortunately, it seems that there are quite a few of my esteemed colleagues. I always try to call them my esteemed colleagues because sometimes they get me so esteemed, but they, they think when they walk into that building, suddenly, they get a lot smarter. That's not my experience, frankly. I have tried to tell them, as someone who's served in local government also, that the same constituents who show the wisdom to elect them to the legislature are the very same constituents who elect our local government officials at the city and county level. So I believe in home rule. I've tried to be a champion of that home rule, and both the League of Cities and the Association of Counties have recognized me for that. I will continue to fight for you on having the right to have and enforce your own ordinances and your own regulations on issues like that, and just, just a host of issues that they've tried to target in recent years, including the ability to regulate things like auto-repair, like bottled water or home water delivery. My experience, again, has been that in industries like that, the people who want some level of regulation, nobody wants to be overregulated, but the people who want some level of regulation tend to be the responsible players in an industry who don't want to have unfair competition from people, and they want to clean up their own business, and to say that we're going to preempt all of those kinds of regulation, to me, doesn't make sense. So we're pushing for my office a few particular things this year. We have an amendment to the hate crimes bill, which I think is a real problem. There are some issues with hate crimes. I mean, there are not only some categories you would think are covered that are not, something as basic as gender is not covered, but we have issues, for instance, if you suffer from a mental disability and you're targeted by someone because of that, that's covered, but if you have a physical disability, it's not covered under the hate crimes law. So we're trying to fix that, and also, there is an issue with something called mixed motives. So if someone is beating you up and calling you names, but they also rob you, they actually have an opportunity to try to get off and say, oh, well, it wasn't really a hate crime, I was really just robbing them, and while I was at it, I was calling them names. So we're trying to fix that loophole by saying that if your motivation was in whole or in part by hatred, that you can receive what hate crimes do, which is just, it's an enhancement. There has to be a crime. We don't penalize speech. We have free speech, but if you're committing a crime, if you're assaulting someone or something like that, this is an enhancement. So there's that. We're working with, I know that your city and others are active with the Regional Planning Council. We're trying to help them with some issues relating to quorums, one of our bills, and I'm involved in several others. One particular one I might mention to you that you may have interest in, as you know, it takes a sixty percent vote to amend our constitution by citizens' initiative, and that's fine, because it's our constitution. But I'm pushing a bill that would allow citizens to initiate statutes by referendum, not a full constitutional amendment, but to adopt a statute with only a fifty percent vote and with lower petition requirements. It's done in ten states. Famously, it's done in California, among others, and this would not only give the citizens an extra tool to get things done, but it would also, just frankly, the threat that the citizenry could bring something like that about is a real powerful push on my colleagues to deal with issues that sometimes they don't feel like dealing with. I did have one of them look at me and say, but that's our job, and my response to that is no. That's, we're here, we're all here to serve the citizens, and if this is something that they would like to see done, I think it stands for the rights of the citizenry to be governed in the manner that they want to. And, and there's some others. So, anyway, I don't want to go on with a long presentation. I know you've got an agenda to get through. I very much appreciate the opportunity to be here with you. I'd be happy to answer any questions about any particular issues, but other than that, we're, we're working hard, and we hope to see you when you come up to Tallahassee, as I know you always do. We just saw the Vice Mayor recently with, with, I guess it was your assistant manager that you were with?
Assistant to the city manager.
Assistant to the manager, okay. Who I know is behind me somewhere there. And, you know, we'll look forward, hope you come up for Dade Days or on other occasions. If there are any questions from any, they'd be happy to address.
Any question for Joe? Dana?
Councilman Leonard mentioned something about some proposed legislation about Sunshine, Sunshine? I don't know if that's a...
Yes. Well, let me say that...
What's your, what's your current position on that?
He's discussed that with me, and I've done my best to dissuade him. A similar bill failed not very long ago. I'm a Sunshine hawk. I know that, I mean, I lived under it not only as a mayor, but for many years as a city attorney in different cities. Sunshine is a good law, you know.
So why don't you impose it upon the legislature?
Well, I mean, there actually have been some impositions that have made it, if you have more than two legislators, because it is a hundred and sixty member body, you do have to give notice of it if you're going to be discussing, and, and open it to the public. But I'll, I'll tell you that, to me at least, having been present in meetings where Sunshine was violated, you can tell right away when that's happened, because a hand goes up, I move this. Second, no discussion, and something gets adopted. So I think it's a great thing for the citizens that they have the right to be present for things, and there's, there's lots of clever ways that you can comply with it. You can call a workshop, but no, I'm not a supporter of the attempt to basically gut something that Florida was a pioneer in, which is making sure that meetings are open to the public, so.
Sure.
Councilman Leonard, I am in disagreement on that one.
And then in terms of the short-term rentals, I mean, where, who's, what, what, how active, because I know they came pretty close last session on the Stubeys or...
Yes. They'll be back.
Couple of bills.
They'll be back. They're trying again, but I think we've got the ability to block them on that. There's so...
Big lobbying.
The League of Cities, the Association of Counties have really advocated strongly on your behalf, and a lot of us think that home rule is important. You know, I mean, that government, which is closest to the citizens, typically does the best job. You look at the dysfunction in Congress, and you look at, you know, what happens in city commissions. City commissions, I mean, again, I served in municipal government. You can't shop for groceries without getting, you know, set straight when you're a local government official. So I, I'll just say this, I think that, that this home rule issue is really important, and, and vacation rentals are maybe the poster child for it, so, you know, if there's a standard or two that needs to be set on a statewide basis, just to make sure that, for instance, that anyone who is renting, at a minimum statewide, we may want to say they have to provide some contact person who can be reached, and we may want to say that certain safety codes to, like, help make sure that kid's hair doesn't get sucked into a pool...
A drain pool, yeah.
Right.
I know about that legislation.
We want to have some, a few statewide standards like that, fine, but by and large, this is an issue that every municipality ought to be able to deal with the way that community wants to be dealt with, and those city commissioners who, you know, don't comply with what their citizens want will hear about it.
One more, one more before I let... The Graco's bill, I just heard about that. I don't know about the plastics, so you have any...
Which one?
Graco, Representative Graco is introducing something?
About?
About, I guess there's a preemption on plastics or single-use and stuff like that?
Oh, yeah, the straws and, and, and plastic containers. You know, I don't know whether there's going to be any statewide regulation of that. The question is whether municipalities have home rule rights to be able to adopt their own legislation.
That's, that's what it is, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, what may not be an issue, and again, I don't want to target my friends in Medley. I've represented Medley. They're a great city, and, and I have friends in Virginia Gardens, but they're not selling the beach. And if you want, as a city, to say, we're going to make sure we don't have plastic inundating our beach, that people are spending time and money to come down and visit, that should be your right, and, and for the state to say, you are powerless to regulate the conditions, any of the conditions, of your own tourism, I, I don't agree with that.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
Any other questions? Because I, I got one. Go ahead, Loris.
Thank you again for coming here. I know it was quite the trek. We have a few resolutions on our agenda. What is your position on the distracted driving bills that are...
I'm very happy to say that I think that that's an issue that will not be an issue for long. The fact is that the advent of self-driving cars is going to render that moot. So I have not been one, you know, what is distracted driving? I mean, the accidents... I mean, the accidents that are caused by people just changing radio stations or just changing a CD in the car or something, or people who put on makeup or people who are...
That's included, all of that is included, yes.
People who are eating on the way.
That's included.
I think that the solution to that is technology and I think that we're about to see, you know, where it's gonna quickly be that 50% of all new cars on the road are gonna be self-driving vehicles or have self-driving capacity. That's gonna make that issue go away and that's a good thing.
Okay. And the other item that we have is the human trafficking that's coming before legislation again from Senator Book.
Yeah. Certainly, we have an awful problem with that and I absolutely support anything we can do to help fight human trafficking. And if that means, you know, training classes for people who work in establishments, particularly hotel establishments that deal with the public, good. You know, there are ways to do that and it's a, it's a terrible problem. We need to address it and I'll, I'll add it to, to follow that up. I also was, I feel very strongly about school safety. I was one of 10 members of my party who voted for the school safety bill last time. Some people said, "Oh, no, it's not perfect. We should do more." But I didn't think that was a practical approach. We needed to do something and I'm glad we did something. And I'm certainly not gonna stand by and watch people repeal something. Frankly, it was, it was a rare example of successful bipartisanship in Tallahassee. I was happy to be somebody in support of it and they can't dismantle it, so.
Thank you.
Mayor?
My question was gonna be bipartisanship. Do you think, because, you know, the last couple of times I've been up there under Governor Scott, it was just like, you know, it was worse than Congress. I mean, you know, honestly, it, it's just amazing to me, you know? And it just seemed like, you know, it just seemed to me that it's almost like, like a, like a badge of honor, you know, to be a recalcitrant these days, you know? And it's frustrating, because, you know, I know even, even amongst us, you know, we come at it from different angles, but we always try to work together, you know? And that's one of the things I can say about this commission, past and present, you know, we always, we always come at it with a spirit of collegiality and no one's trying to, you know, jam anybody and we, I think we're open to our, each other's opinions. You think under DeSantis, it'll be any different or you think that...
Yes.
Really? Okay, that's good to hear. That's good.
I've had... The governor had a lunch for legislators right after he was sworn in and I went up and chatted with him and his, by the way, very amazing wife, who's really spectacular as well.
Yeah.
Keep in mind, we have a new lieutenant governor who's right here from Dade County, Jeanette Nunez.
Yeah.
Who I'm a big fan of and have had a great working relationship when she served in the House.
Yeah.
As our Majority Leader. And I think that helps too. But I, we had this lunch and I went up to the table and I chatted with the new governor and his wife for a couple of minutes. That's about 10 times more conversation than I had with Rick Scott in four years that I served in Tallahassee. So, I don't agree with everything that the governor has said, but I've heard a lot that I think is very encouraging. I've also heard a dozen, 15 times already from his office letting us know when he's coming to town to speak about something.
Yeah.
"I'm gonna go out tomorrow for lunch to the Latin Builders Association where he's speaking, because I do want to hear what he has to say." So, I think this is a real departure. One of the things that sets Tallahassee apart from Washington is at least civility. And I, I could count on my fingers the number of times somebody's been actually rude to me. They don't always schedule my bills for a hearing, but that's another story. But at least people, by and large, there have been polite. But I, I'll give you one little anecdote. We had a committee hearing, one of my committees, and for some reason, one of our freshman Democrats was confused about the process. She was sitting in another committee when she needed to come and present and was confused about whether or not she could get up and leave her committee and didn't, didn't get there. And all the other bills came up and all the other bills were considered. One of my friends was sitting there saying, "She's not here, she didn't make it." I went up, our ranking member said, "Well, I would present it or do you want to?" I went to the chair. So, the chair is of course a Republican and so is the vice chair. Chair looked at me and said, "Don't worry, we got it." The vice chair of the committee, from the panhandle, got up and presented that freshman Democrat's bill from Tampa and it passed through the committee unanimously. I thought that was extraordinary.
Yeah. That's good to hear.
And that was just, you know, it was, it's beyond courtesy.
Yeah.
It's, it's helping with the process.
Yeah.
So, seeing things like that, I really think we, we have the chance to get a lot done. Speaker Oliva, and I don't agree on a lot of issues, but I've sat and talked with him. He's a, I, I don't want to throw rocks at the previous speaker. Previous speaker, although he's, was a controversial guy, was certainly very nice to me. But Speaker Oliva is a process guy. He wants to be fair-minded. He wants to run things in a way that he can be proud of and our House can be proud of. So, I'm...
Good.
Cautiously optimistic.
Glad to hear it.
That we're moving forward and that the best interests of the state and the best interests of the people are what's gonna be most important, not how you're registered. We can disagree.
Yeah.
We can disagree without being disagreeable.
Well, the governor's been, been through here a couple, when he was running for Senate, you know, you know, I sat with him a few times. He came by and, um, good guy, really good guy, really smart guy. So, yeah, so it'll be interesting.
Setting a completely different tone.
Yeah, you could see it from the first day.
And tone matters.
Yeah, it does matter.
Tone matters a lot.
Especially now it is.
So, I, I'm optimistic.
Good.
Of course, I'm, I'm a Democrat in Tallahassee. If I wasn't an optimist, I couldn't even show up, so.
And, and, and you got elected, so.
Right.
Okay, any more questions for Joe? Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you very much for having me, Mayor.
Appreciate you making the extra effort getting down here.
Appreciate it.
It's good to see you.
And nice to see you too and nice to see you all.
Keep up the good work.
Don't, don't hesitate to call on me if there's something we can do. We know from time to time, bad things happen. We were happy to help when you guys were hit by that storm and if, hopefully, we won't have another of those, but please come see us when you come up.
Okay, don't walk away. The vice mayor says she wants a picture, so.
Oh, sure.
Let's go.
I should introduce, by the way, my aide, Cody Rogers, who's sitting right here. And my deputy assistant, if she would stand. This is my daughter, Michelle Geller. She wanted to come by today and see this. Where do we go? Up here?
Okay. Okay. Good. Okay. Good. Okay. So, item 10A, Mauricio?
A resolution to accept the recommendation of the City Arts, City Public Arts Advisory Committee for approval of Art in Public Places Application Number AP 2018-05, submitted by Sunny Isles Property Venture LLC for the placement of a Pablo Achugari sculpture on the property located at 15800 Collins Avenue.
Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, the Ritzell Center has placed several pieces at, location at 15800 Collins Avenue. This is a new piece that it was installed right before Art Basel and we went to the pack. We got a recommendation that is attached to the package for this item and they are recommending for approval. The piece is called Il Fiore by Pablo Achugari.
Okay. Any questions regarding our after-the-fact approval?
Don't look at me.
I know.
I just had a comment.
Okay, Larissa, go ahead.
Just wanted to say thank you for accommodating them. They really wanted to make this piece work for Art Basel and they appreciate it.
Okay. Do I hear a motion approved?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye? Thank you. Thank you, Claudia. Item 10B?
A resolution amending Resolution Numbers 15Z150 and 20162626 to extend the time period to obtain a building permit by TDR Towers Master Association.
Back in February 2015, the Trump Tower Condominiums Association, they obtained an approval for a site plan for the parking garage expansion. Unfortunately, they haven't been able to get everything together to come for a building permit, so they're requesting this third extension for the site plan approval. This approval will get them through an additional one year until February 2020.
This has been, I remember that one a long time ago, you know? So, you know, basically, this is the, this is to heighten the garage between the three Trump Towers in the back and there's two garages in the middle and this one adds some height to it. And we, we approved it back in, I think it was even before I was mayor.
2015.
2015, okay, yeah. So, but any comments or questions? Yeah, I don't have any issue with it.
I'm moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you. Item 10C?
A resolution approving the selection of United Healthcare as provider for employee health insurance, Humana as a provider of dental insurance, IMED as a provider of vision care, Richelieu Home as a provider of life insurance, accidental death and dismemberment insurance, long-term disability insurance, voluntary short-term disability insurance and voluntary life insurance for a period of one year.
Honorable Mayor and Commissioner, this is the annual renewal of the city's health insurance as well as the life and disability insurances. We work closely with our brokers to get the best rates possible and after some negotiation with our carriers, we see, we received a proposal with a slight increase and no planned changes. We also received a rate pass for our vision and our life and disability insurances and these are the proposals we're bringing forward tonight for your approval.
Okay. Any questions for Yale?
No.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries. Thank you, Yale. Item 10D?
A resolution approving amendments to the City of Sunny Isles Beach Drug-Free Workplace Program Policy.
These proposed amendments to our city's drug and alcohol policy will bring us in compliance with recent, recent revisions to the Federal Transit Administration regulations. As a subrecipient of the ARA grant funds, the city is required to have a drug-free workplace policy with the specific elements covered in the FTA regulations. Therefore, we're bringing, we're bringing these revisions to you tonight for approval.
Any questions?
Nope.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Thank you, Yale. Okay, item 10E?
A resolution approving the donation of surplus computer equipment to the South Florida Digital Alliance.
All right, Derek, you're up.
Honorable Mayor and Commissioner, this is our normal disposal of surplus equipment and as usual, we'll offer anything to the school that they'll take and then the remainder will go to the South Florida Digital Alliance.
Excellent.
Excellent.
Good cause, yeah.
Excellent.
Absolutely.
I'd like to move to approve.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries. Thanks, Derek. Item 10F?
A resolution authorizing the Chief of Police in accordance with the Comprehensive Crime Control Act of 1984 and in accordance with Section 932.7055 of the Florida statute to expand partial forfeiture funds from the Department of Justice and Law Enforcement Trust Fund.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Commission. Respectfully requested that City Commission approve the expenditure of partial forfeiture funds from DOJ and LETF in amount not to exceed $67,000. The use of these funds will allow the police department to provide ongoing enhanced training for our officers in the areas of active shooter, tactical lifesaving efforts and the purchase of additional equipment such as ballistic shields, portable med pack, first aid kits for our officers to carry and as far as, and also to utilize for approved law enforcement charities and other crime prevention and community policing activities.
Excellent. Thank you, Chief. Any questions for the chief?
I have a question.
Yes.
Will the active shooting training occur at the school again?
Well, this is gonna be in multiple places. The actual training probably will not, but we are planning in the future to have some, some live scenarios that we're hoping we're gonna be able to get the school board on, you know, onboard with us. So, yeah, so...
Any way I can help.
But the training is really the most important part and this is gonna be very comprehensive.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries. Item 10G?
A resolution approving an agreement with HG2 Emergency Lighting LLC to provide and install special lighting and equipment for emergency vehicles.
Again, Honorable Mayor and Commissioner, it's requested that City Commission adopt the attached resolution approving an agreement with HG2 Emergency Lighting LLC in an amount not to exceed $60,000. This is for the emergency equipment that we put on our police cars. We are piggybacking the contract with the City of Kissimmee, Florida, who is currently using HG3. We've also used them in the past and they've served us well as a vendor's.
Excellent. Any questions?
Nope.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Item 10H?
A resolution approving change order number 23 relating to the agreement with Roal Global Networks LP for the Collins Avenue to the lease undergrounding project.
Honorable Mayor and City Commission, on behalf of the city manager, this is the workshop that you just had. It's to request approval for change order number 23 for the street lighting project in the amount of... Thank you. The most important part is that it will require a budget amendment, which would come before you next month. So, if you approve it now, we would need a budget amendment for the CIP for next month.
So, this reflects the workshop we had earlier today. We went over this in detail.
That's correct.
Got it?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions?
No.
Following the workshop? Nope. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Thank you. Thank you, Susan. 10A?
A resolution awarding RFP number 181102 to and authorizing the city manager to negotiate an entrance into an agreement with Azulejo Inc. to provide bus shelter relocation and refurbishing services.
Honorable Mayor and City Commission, we are in need of refurbishing and relocating some of our bus shelters all along Collins Avenue on the west side so that we can move them further back where we have an easement and allow for wider sidewalks. We were going to contract out everything. We went out for bid. We realized that the cost to refurbish was equal to or greater than purchasing new ones. So, last month, we asked you for approval to purchase new bus shelters, which you approved. This is a contract with Azulejo Inc. to actually do the demo work, put down the pavers, the concrete and restore landscaping, irrigation, electric. City staff would be used to install the new shelters.
Got it. So, we're subbing out the infrastructure and the city staff will come into the installation. Got it?
Exactly.
Got it?
It's a cost savings of almost $200,000.
Excellent.
I just have a question.
Sure.
Susan, I'm often asked, why don't our bus shelters have sprinklers, you know, those?
Like misters?
Misters, yes. Can you please explain why we are not able to do that?
That would require a water source that currently doesn't exist in sidewalks, as well as there's some people who want that, there's other people who don't because it creates a humid environment.
Right, thank you.
You're welcome.
That's true. We'd have to get water from the adjacent property owner. We don't own the adjacent property.
Correct.
Right.
The lighting is solar powered, so they are literally independent. There's no infrastructure going to them.
Okay, yeah, so it's just a freestanding bench for the most part, yeah.
Exactly.
Got it. Okay, any other questions for Susan? Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, Susan. Ten J.
A resolution expressing support for Florida Senate Bill seventy-six and Florida House Bill one oh seven, which would prohibit the use of wireless communication devices while driving.
Okay, this is basically continued support to the same subject matter that we had done last year to protect the safety and welfare of pedestrians and particularly, you know, due to the number of accidents that can occur by this type of distraction and others. And this year, this was brought to my attention both by Vice Mayor Svechnikin and Commissioner Lama had requested putting this on.
Okay, we have a public speaker. Fabiola, you want to come up and?
Mr.?
How are you?
Good. Okay, I would like for you guys to approve this motion because I have three children, a newborn also.
Congratulations.
And thank you. And walking around the city, we witnessed multiple occasions that the people is just doing anything and everything while driving. So if you guys will approve it, it will be good for the future generations. And also, one place that I want to point the attention is that in Collins Avenue, in front of the mobile gas station, that intersection going to Sunny Hills Beach Boulevard that you guys put the flash for the people to stop so the pedestrian can cross over, is being totally disrespected.
I know.
So I don't know, like, what ideas can come up to do something about that specific place because it's like, I live in Puente Ana, so I passed there multiple times, even walking too, and you just have to stop and just wait for them to decide to stop. It can be flashing, 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 and the cars continue. And the second intersection that has a little bit of a, is a little bit problematic with the school, is the one in the corner of the other gas station in Publix, in the one eighty-second I think street. Okay, the problem that we have in there is that the cars that are coming from the school are making a double line, making a left to go northbound.
North, yeah.
And the ones that we're going southbound, we get trapped. And I don't know if we can, with our wonderful police department, do something and put their people, only for a few, like, it's like a twenty-minute problem during dismissal and when they're bringing the kids at the school. But it really gets annoying for the people that we're trying to make a south, we're going south because we cannot do it. So we are trapping there. So those two things, and thank you for everything, okay?
Thank you, Fabiola. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and I agree with Fabiola on the distracted driving. I mean, it's been, like I said, when I pull up my island, you know, and even the crosswalks, I mean, they just, they're going right through them. And so, you know, it's one of the reasons why I'm high on the pedestrian bridges, but we can't put them everywhere. So, you know, we can put them where we can put them. So, okay, any other discussion?
Yeah, I wanted to add.
Go ahead, go ahead.
When Catherine and I were in Tallahassee recently, we met with some of the supporters that are actually named on this resolution. We thought that it might become stronger if we named the people that are supporting it because it does have bipartisan support and it's got a lot of support from the Senate. We actually need more support from the House. So while this is a resolution for us as a city, we can't enact this as an ordinance. It has to come from Tallahassee. So anyone that is looking to get involved and write letters to these people, that will be very helpful. You know, this has been going on for many years as a potential bill, and it's never being heard. It was before no texting, then it was hands-free, and now it's distracted driving, which I don't know if you realize that there's tests done where a distracted driver makes more mistakes and is worse off than a drunk driver because a drunk driver actually just tries to go slow, where a distracted driver is not looking on the road. So this is a really big deal, not only obviously for our city, especially since we've had so many accidents, but for anyone, you know, who has kids, doesn't have kids. So any support that anybody wants to give, you know, you can see me, email me, and I'll help you get in touch with the senators and the representatives that are supporting this. And thank you, Alex, for also supporting this.
Excellent. Okay, so do we, are we voting on the support? Is that what we're doing? Are we actually, okay, so sorry about that. So do I hear a motion to basically?
Motion to approve.
Yep, do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are supporting the distracted driving legislation in Tallahassee. And thanks for taking the time, Fabiola. We appreciate it. So, ten K.
A resolution expressing support for Florida Senate Bill five four zero relating to the issue of identifying instances of human trafficking.
Yes. This has been something that I've been very passionate about. I've done a lot of workshops with the school regarding this issue. This bill is very specific in that it requires that hotels, motels, any establishment that is renting out rooms, that the staff is trained in identifying signs of human trafficking, which can range from prostitution of minors to forcing people to clean rooms without paying them. This bill did not go through last year. This year, we think that it is going to go through, and again, with the support from our community, again, we're putting Lauren Book's name on the resolution in hopes that that shows her how much we as a city support this. Again, if you're interested in supporting this, please speak to me, and I'll help you get the letter or email or whatever it is that you would like to discuss with the people that are involved with this.
Okay.
I'd like to comment on this.
Sure, Jennifer.
First, I'd like to commend Vice Mayor Svechnikin for bringing this issue to our schools and to allowing the older children to be part of those discussions because it's often things that we don't talk about at home. I started my legal career working human trafficking cases in immigration. The stories are awful. They're often things that are right under our noses. South Florida is one of the biggest markets, and so it's certainly among us. And I think anything we can do to help.
Miami-Dade County is actually number one in the country.
Wow.
And with the Super Bowl coming next year, this is a very big issue as well.
Yep, Miami, California, and New York are the three.
Wow, yeah.
So it's here. We may not like talking about it or thinking about it, but it's here. So anything we can do to support that, I think, would be great.
Okay, with that, I'll take a motion to support that.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, so we're supporting the legislation in human trafficking. Excellent. Item ten L.
A resolution opposing Florida Senate Bill two four six and House Bill one oh one, which seeks to preempt local regulation of contracts for construction services by reducing the amount of retainage a public entity may withhold.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. This item is a bill that the Senate and the House are both supporting to limit home rule by regulating how much retainage we're allowed to withhold from payments to our contractors, which basically means it'll be harder for us to hold them accountable to meet the terms of the contracts. So we oppose it.
Okay, I can see somebody must have taken a trip to Tallahassee, huh? So, okay, makes sense to me.
Makes a lot of sense to me, so I'll move to approve.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you. All right, thank you, and thanks for the, you know, thank you for the legislative oomph, you know, for the cities. We appreciate that. All right, item ten M. Mauricio.
A resolution eliminating by March thirty-first the city's in-house legal department in tandem with issuance of RFP number nineteen oh two oh one, soliciting proposals for outside law firms by March fourth.
Okay, so probably one of the toughest things to do when you're a leader or a manager is either downsize or eliminate departments or that type of thing. I've had to do a lot of it in my career, and it's never easy. And so when recently, our city, our former city attorney, Hans Atanat, resigned and to go into private practice, and during that, we had a series of workshops in January, and was it January? Yeah, we had a series of workshops in January, and the commission decided to outsource our legal department. We had an in-house legal department for a number of years, and we decided to outsource our legal department. So with that came the elimination of the four positions currently in the legal department, and that's what this resolution speaks to. We've had, I've had extensive conversations with our interim city attorneys whose positions are being eliminated. They've acted very professionally and, you know, including the support staff. Catherine's here, and we spoke with Jasmine today, and that, given the, in our city charter, it basically states that we can, that we can have an in-house legal department or we can outsource the legal. And so we have the flexibility to do either one. Traditionally, we had an in-house legal. The commission looked upon the leaving of our, the departure of our former city attorney as, you know, potentially taking a new path with our legal department. And this was discussed at the last meeting that I wasn't here. Do I need to read the memo?
I don't think you have to.
No, I don't think I have to read the memo, but basically, you know, it's outlined in the memo what we're doing. We put an RFP in the beginning of February for legal services. We're expected to get replies by the end of the month. We're going to then evaluate those replies, and so, and so the formal elimination, what we're recommending will be March thirty-first. We had an honor before date, but I think we can make that clear. I asked the city manager, it's a charter position, so it actually reports the commission, but the support functions come from the city department. So I asked the city manager to basically recommend a severance, a severance package and follow our city procedures for that. So Chris, if you want to speak to that.
I'll make the motion for this, well, once you pass the resolution.
Okay, okay, so what we'll do is, what we're going to do is, we're going to pass the resolution to eliminate the in-house legal, but I want to put on the record Chris's recommendation for the severance agreements, you know, with the affected individuals, and to put on the record the date that we're actually going to take care of that. So with that, do I have a motion for the elimination of the in-house legal?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, that's done. So now, Chris, you want to speak to the?
Again, this is my recommendation motion for the commission now. I requested a motion directing me to provide severance to the interim city attorney, interim deputy city attorney, and each of the employees of the department as follows. In addition to all leave time accrued that, you know, that they are rightfully owed, I'm recommending six weeks per year for every year of continuous employment, not to exceed twenty weeks of compensation, which is the state statutory limit we can do on severance. And in light of the circumstance and in consideration of the severance payment, execution of a separation agreement containing a waiver and release to be required from each department employee, and this payment will be made by March thirty-first.
Okay, and just to be clear, we're going to, the actual cutoff date will be March thirty-first.
Right, and they will be paid this by that day.
So, right.
My recommendation.
Okay.
Six weeks per year.
So, so we, this was all worked out in the last couple of days, so it didn't make it into a resolution, the agenda, but I think it's, I think it can be a tack on. So I'd like to have a motion to, based on what Chris is, based on what Chris is recommending.
Motion to approve the city manager's severance recommendation.
Go ahead, do I hear a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, any opposed? Okay. Julia Latoya, thank you. Okay, appreciate it, and we move forward. So, but again, Catherine, you too, appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, that is it for our resolutions, and item twelve A was deferred. Then we have item twelve B, which is a discussion regarding the status of the city advisory committee.
Okay, so I received inquiries about what, from the CAC, from my pick in particular, as to, you know, what was going on. And so, you know, my historical perspective, having served on the CAC for many years, I see it as having a good value for the city. I think it's a good, it's a good method whereby the CAC members serve as a liaison between the residents and the commission. I see it as a great training ground for future leadership. I think the majority of us sitting here today on the dais, we all served on the CAC. I think some ideas have really come to fruition, and I just see it as having good benefit and good lasting value for succession purposes for leadership in our city, and I've always perceived it that way. And as far as I see it, I'd be happy to serve as a liaison to the CAC if my colleagues agree that we should continue, much in the same way that our vice mayor serves as the liaison to the Public Arts Committee. So I would be happy to take on that responsibility because I see a robust function of the CAC as something that has long-term value and benefit to the city and to our community. So I'm advocating for the continuance of the CAC.
Was there an advocate for not continuing the CAC?
Well, we were kind of like saying, I got, I guess, like, the feedback that I received over the last couple of months is, well, what are we doing? Are we really having it? Does anybody like it?
Yeah.
And that's where I had that discussion with the city manager. I said, let's have an open discussion about that because I see it as having, just from a continuity standpoint and having value, I don't, I don't want to minimize, you know, the role that anybody else plays in this. I just see it as having long-term value for the city and for, you know, communications and so forth. So I just, I would like to see it, you know, move ahead, move that process ahead.
So I'm going to punt to Commissioner Viscara as the former chair of the CAC, so what are your thoughts?
I have my two cents. I agree with what Commissioner Goldman is saying in terms of the traditional value of the CAC, the training ground. I mean, I had the benefit of being the chair for four years, and it gave me the opportunity to interact and get to know the different individuals within the city, so it has its value. I do believe that, to some extent, the city has outgrown the purpose under which it was functioning. I feel like the, the CAC members, because we function under sunshine, it makes it a little bit difficult to communicate, which is fine because that's part of the training, but it's more of, we have, you know, you have to look for projects. You have to find, it started feeling like a fishing expedition in a city that is largely developed. So the beautification issues or, you know, they are just much more difficult to come by. I found the last two years in particular were not really that fruitful in terms of other members finding projects. I do believe in the value of committees. I think that if we have particular projects, we should have committees. Maybe we can reshape the CAC to address particular, particular issues. But in terms of asking volunteers to go out there and find things in a city where it's becoming increasingly difficult to find, you know, pet projects or issues, not that they can't be found, but I consider, you know, we have city resources, right? Mauricio has to come and sit there, you know, from six to seven. We have sometimes a commissioner who comes, the deputy city manager would come and sit in there. So we have all these city resources being invested in fishing expeditions that aren't happening. So I think that the role of a committee is good, the training of using those committees as training areas for future commissioners is good, but not in this, I just don't think it's functioning the way that it used to. I can tell you, for example, seeing, seeing the difficulty that people were having finding these projects, I created, you guys remember my condo list? You know, I handed it over. I broke up the city, and I handed it over so that the individual members, if they could not find a project, they would have something to do. But at the end of the day, people, especially if you're volunteering your time, you want to do the things that are interesting to you. So if your hand is something that's not interesting, they not have to, you know, or whoever's in charge has to then, you know, be, become, you know, the person with the ruler, hey, where's your project? And then, you know, it changes the spirit. So I just don't think that it's working the way that it's used to because the city has outgrown that particular structure. But I don't rule out that committee work is valuable, and I think if we found a way to reaccommodate that, it needs something. It needs something.
I'd be happy to volunteer to make that happen. I think that I had a very robust, you know, activity plan, and I think Bud, when you were on the dais, you saw that. I think that the condo workshops and providing value, whether it was forty-year recertification or permitting or so forth, we did, we adopted social media. We did a lot. We, you know, at least I would love to step in and say, hey, there are things like, whether it's the managers forum or other, not force-feeding a project, but more saying, okay, what ideas? How can we, you know, within the confines of what we do, how can we bring that to life? How can we, you know, within the confines of what we do, how can we bring that to life? And how can we encourage and inspire? Because I think it's worth, it's worth preserving and it's worth kind of moving forward.
Mm-hmm.
Not forcing projects, but, you know, kind of elevating the consciousness and elevating the dialogue. So I'm happy to participate in that process.
Sure, understand. Do you think maybe the frequency, the expectation level and the frequency, you think if we?
We lowered the frequency.
We did?
We used to have it monthly. We did it every other month.
Yeah, yeah. I haven't paid as much attention lately.
It's not, it's just not, I think in its current form, it's not.
Yeah, you know.
I didn't have a, when I was on it, I didn't have that problem.
It was a different time. It was a different time. To Jennifer's, to Jennifer's point, it was a different time. And, you know, it's interesting what happened at One Blood. You know, I had an interesting thing with One Blood. I merged these blood centers together. They're all non-for-profit, so I ended up with one master board. But then each region kind of wanted to have like what we called a board of reference, where they really had no teeth. You know, they really had, but they, but they still wanted to have some involvement. So, and so we did these boards of reference, and they died after a while because basically, you know, the, there wasn't a lot of, there wasn't a lot of bite to it. But in this case, you know, I do agree. I think it's been a good incubator. I think it's been a good kind of proving ground. So, you know, I would, I would indulge, I would indulge Dana if you want to take a whack at it, you know?
Let me, let me see.
So, yeah. And four years is a long time to be chairman, by the way. It is. I'm serious. I mean, you paid your penance for that one because, you know, it's a long time. No, because, you know, ultimately, you know, I'm a big believer in term limits and stuff like that for that reason because I feel like if I can't get it done in my term limits, then forget it. You know, so you were there a long time. But I also agree with Jennifer. When we were on it, the city was younger. I think, I think that, you know, I just think we're a little bit more structured now and we're probably, I think we just get in front of things a lot, you know, a lot. You know what I'm saying?
Yes, absolutely.
There's just not, we don't leave a lot, we don't leave a lot of stones unturned. But to your point though Dana, if you want to, if you want to take a shot at it, I'm all for it. I mean, that's.
I have a question.
It's fine, sure.
Do, can we have in our charter temporary committees where they are like Commissioner Viscara said, project-based? So for instance, you know, would be a pedestrian safety committee, and it would.
I think you could use the CAC for that, though. I think what, instead of like creating more committees, I think you say, okay, we have a pedestrian safety issue. We want a citizens group to look at it. Let's give it to the CAC, you know, and then that gives you a mandate to kind of work on. So I think you can do that without, you know, without ginning up more committees.
No, I mean, just one at a time so that, so that if you had people, project-based, so this group of people might be interested in pedestrian safety where another group might be interested in, you know, something else.
It's like the art committee.
Right.
Like the pack. It's exactly that. I think you have one purpose. You have people of, who are interested in that topic, who come and are able to push the subject forward, and it's like-minded people with a knowledge of that subject. If you have, because what you're saying is true, like you, we get our subcommittees, and then you're able to bring, you know, your friends or the like-minded, like the theory is there.
Yeah.
But it's not working in practice. It, because people are, don't know necessarily how to go out and get their members of the subcommittees. It's not, it's just, it didn't unfold that way. But if you have a particular project and then people know, like the art example, and people know, okay, I have a degree in this or I have an interest in that, it's able, I feel, I find that it just works a lot better. And the CAC can, can maybe take that direction.
Yeah.
But it needs, it needs a reshaping. It's the best way I can put it. It needs some revamping.
I'd like to add something. I mean, maybe, you know, once, you know, it's a yearly kind of commitment for the members, maybe at the beginning of the year, you know, the members and the chair get together and say, okay, these are our goals for the year. These are the areas that we want to enhance, and set two or three goals for the year, whether it's environment, whether it's pedestrian safety, and concentrate on that. And perhaps that could help. Instead of just waiting to see, okay, what are we going to do? Or, you know, throughout the year, you're still trying to kind of have everything come together.
It's a challenge. You're on it. It's a challenge.
Yeah.
You know, I think that's a very.
But, you know, have a, have a meeting with the members.
Yeah.
And say, okay, what are our concerns? How can we help the city? How can we work with the city government? And, okay, let's concentrate on these three topics, areas.
We actually used to do that. Because I can remember like, like I.
Have a game plan for the year.
I was doing like water taxi. And I remember like, you know, we had like a half a dozen things in the early years. You know, go ahead.
We, we, we had a focus and like, we didn't make work, and let me give you a few examples. Maybe that's the best way I can explain it. The education committee, that was number one. There, we had a mission, and we had a committee. They wanted the water taxi. That was another issue.
Yeah.
The beach walk, that was probably one of the best successes of putting a citizens group together. That was something we had to go through a process, and we still have that report as to why we can't do a beach walk and the issues with the narrowness and the erosion on our beach. The update of the city's comprehensive plan just a couple of years ago, we had a citizens committee that was a pure mission. You know, we, the problem that we have as staff is, we've got $100 million capital five-year improvement plan. There's a lot of issues in there. You know, there's a lot of different things that we're working on that need input. To go out and maybe in a vacuum, and I'm not saying that you're suggesting in a vacuum, but, but to go out and have, I think, I think a citizens group, one, we either have to have a clearly defined issue that we're dealing with, likely things, these things that have come up over the years, like the water taxi, like the beach walk. But like with the cultural master plan, there was a focus on getting citizen input because we needed it. And I don't think you can, I think a volunteer committee needs the guidance of, you know, what are the areas that we're really working on that are going to be productive? I mean, just the things we talked about that were on our agenda tonight. I mean, we've got, and the workshop just before this meeting tonight on, like I said, the most complicated and expensive thing this city will ever do, which is this underground.
So what you're saying is, yeah, we've kind of left the committee to its own devices, if you will?
Well, when they had a focus, when Dana came on, there was a burning issue. And this is one of the really difficult ways.
Yeah, and I had it too. I had issues that were pretty front and center.
Well, no, when I started, it was like the city said to me, we want to improve. We had a trouble getting people to events at that time. And we weren't communicating, we said, the task was, let's improve communications in the city. And that's when that started, that whole thing of, you know, is it banners on the street? Is it, what about social media? What about this platform and that? And so when I started, I was given a specific direction, and then we ran with it as the CAC. So it wasn't like we sat around, you know, prior commit, CAC, Harvey and those guys, and they were like, well, tell us what to do. It wasn't like that when I started. And I think if they're given some direction or some focus, then it will ferment, it will, it will, it will create more, more ideas and more, more direction and more, more outcome. So I'm advocating for giving a little direction, moving it, and then kind of reviving it and making it kind of function.
And I think if we can narrow the direction to a few key things, like you're saying, with maybe a little bit of guidance from the city, then that's, that's fine. And you've got the enthusiasm, so.
I listen. The CAC was very positive, a great experience.
It was a good experience for me, too. Yeah.
And so why not? Why not? Why just dismantle it?
Yeah, we used to call it something, boy, when I started, it was something different in the very beginning.
Well, when I left, it wasn't called CAC.
It wasn't called CAC in the beginning. I chaired like government affairs committees and stuff like that.
I know this. At some point soon after I left, well, within a couple of years, Isaac was the chair of whatever it was, or was on it.
Right.
Because he used to call me all the time.
Right.
About some public works project in the city because he was on his committee.
Okay. Okay. So I think, so Dana, you know, I'm all for you being the liaison, and hopefully we can, like Alex was suggesting, maybe you can sit there, ready, we can narrow it down a few things because we can't all.
I think it's a great idea.
We can't all go to the meetings, obviously, because of sunshine. So you can narrow it down to a couple of things, and we get them some focused, and hopefully that'll, that'll perpetuate. Because I do agree, it's a good, it's a good, it's a good, you know, kind of, kind of, you know, farm team for incubating, you know, public officials.
Are we going to keep with the same designees, like, you know, number of appointees per commission?
Well, why don't you, why don't you look at it and come back with a recommendation?
Okay, I'll be happy to.
Okay, do that. Do that and come back with a recommendation.
You will have to do reappointments because like.
Yeah. Yeah, we, yeah, we have to by, it's by charter. Yeah, I got it. Yeah, we will.
Well, I'd like to come up with two or three focus areas, and then we'll make a determination as to how we're going to, how we're going to do the appointments.
Okay.
Okay.
Excellent. I have a public speaker from, Joyce Keller? Joyce?
Yes.
Okay. That's all right. How you doing?
I'm doing fine.
Can someone give Joyce the hand mic there and turn it on for her? Thank you. Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joyce.
First of all, I'd like to, thank you very much for listening to me this past year in regards to the bridge, the pedestrian bridge. And you did a fine job for putting in some grates, which I'm really grateful for. My cart goes over smoother, and I think it's more comfortable. And I see a lot of people using the grates, so I thank each one of you. And Chris was very helpful. He gave me his phone number, and I was like, I'd beat down his phone number and say, hey, the lights are off here on the bridge, or something else. And it really helps to know that there's somebody that's here.
Paying attention. It's great.
Respond to whatever our needs are. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have two concerns I put down, but then I added two more because I was listening to everything, and I forgot about these two. First of all, I have some pictures here that maybe, okay. These pictures were taken of the beaches on the walk access to the ocean on 172nd Street. It's just a sampling of the mini benches in disrepair around the city, and many are even missing the SIB emblem. The beaches were, the benches, excuse me, were painted. They should have been powder coated probably.
There you go.
And I just don't know why some city employees might not see these and kind of report the issue. So that'd be one thing. And I passed the pictures around so you at least see.
Great.
Okay. And my husband took those pictures, so did a good job, I thought. Second thing, a crosswalk was recently installed across Collins and just outside this building. And at a city council meeting last year, it was said that it would be timed with the rest of the traffic lights, but it is not really that way. And it messes with the traffic flow every day. So maybe somebody could look into that.
Joyce, that's, you're talking the one, the one that's right here in this, that's just the crosswalk over to the hotel from here?
Right.
Yeah.
It's undermanned.
Yeah, that, I mean, obviously, that is totally controlled by the state. That's the one that's there until we have the bridge up. And that's, we'll look into that, look into that. We've had some issues with that crossing since they put it in.
Okay, two other things I didn't put down but thought about here was the flooding that's on 172nd Street. The new sewers did not fix that issue, so we still have flooding there. So just.
We had a meeting about that today. We're looking at what else needs to be done to fix that problem. We haven't nailed it yet. Ironically, we had a meeting this morning about that.
Very good. And you're running up on time with things.
I'm going to give, I'm just going to give Joyce my seat and be done with it here. So keep going, keep going. That's all right. That's great. So.
And then on the parking garage on 163rd Street, it needs to say beach parking rather than just parking. I think that would be very helpful to people.
We actually don't advocate it for beach parking. I mean, people can park there to go to the beach, but we actually, yeah, I know. It's really, you know, we look at it. We've always been kind of, we've never really encouraged folks to come over into the city and park to go to the beach. We've kind of sent them to Hallowe, to be honest with you. And so, and where we have a little bit of beach parking, like by Pier Park and stuff, it's a zoo. It's a mess, you know? So, but, you know, so, but, you know.
Well, the real answer is.
It's parking for the park, the real answer?
We need to, we need to better identify it as public parking.
Public parking, yeah. Yeah, public parking, we go for beach parking, eh, you know, because we really, the Hallowe's got a huge amount of parking, big surface lots, big beach, and that's really where we send the public. We kind of feel like, we, I'm not saying that our beach is exclusively for our residents because it's open to the public, but, but we haven't, if you notice, we haven't built parking garages on the beach for public parking for that reason. So, so that's, that's by design, I guess, I could say, you know, in some ways, to be honest with you. Yeah.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Joyce. Thank you very much. Okay. Anything else to come before the commission? Commissioners, Vice Mayor?
I just wanted to make an announcement. Joyce reminded me, speaking about the pedestrian bridge. Joyce, if you're around on Saturday at 5:00 PM on the pedestrian bridge, there's going to be a pop-up art club where people are going to be painting on the bridge. So you're welcome to come and check it out. Maybe this is something you'd be interested in doing as well. 5:00 PM on Saturday.
Okay. Nothing else to come before the commission? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming, everyone. When's the next meeting? March what?